There it is, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Dan Kiley, I am the Vice Chair who will be acting as Chairman tonight. But my first thing is going to be to appoint Whitney to fill in for Phil Vermeer. Okay, after calling the meeting to order, I'm going to ask for public comments. These are comments for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here for the public hearings, that's on the agenda, you'll be able to speak at that time. Next will be the Select Board Report.
Yes, we've got a lot of things going on, I'll be brief because we've got a lot tonight. We got the Johnson Drive Committee presented an excellent sort of report from their work with a recommendation. Their recommendation was a mixture of the town retaining property and potentially selling some of it. And then also we had a retreat last week with some of the staff in town as well, where we just talked strategic planning. Some people remember years ago, we went through strategic planning process and sort of rejuvenating that, continuing that forward. And we appointed a Trailmaster volunteer, so Craig Sanborn is going to be our Trailmaster for the trails on town property.
Lead use and administrators report?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
On the Johnson property, do you have any sense of what process the Select Board will use at this point to?
Yeah.
Based on the recommendation?
Yeah, so the next steps is, because one of the recommendations was to retain some of the property, there's just clarifying any right away issues that's legal. And then we'll have an additional public hearing before a final decision was made. So those are the sort of next two things, get a legal opinion on any of the questions that were raised at this point, and then have another public hearing.
It seems to be fairly busy, summer activities. Just got word today that we hit 99 building permits during the town for the year so far. Wanted to see how that compared to last year, and it turns out it's exactly the same at this point. So we're, last year was a busy year, so it continues to be busy for us. Our building inspector is doing lots of inspections. He's also, as you guys know, our health officer, and he's been fairly busy with health officer work. Talked to him just this afternoon, we have a failing septic system at one of our resident owned communities, and he's working on that, that's a pretty big deal. We've been dealing with some basic junk trash issues, which are sort of common this time of year. I'm busy with some zoning enforcement, got a couple of setback trusions I'm taking action on. We have some applications for your next hearings in late August. I met yesterday with Brandy and her partner Rod from PlaySense to work on contract stuff, they're going to be delivering contracts for us to execute. Between us and them, as you know, we have a contract with us and New Hampshire Housing for the big grant, the HOP, the Housing Opportunities Grant. And they will be our contractor for that, pre-approved through that process. They are very busy, but they have time for us in this Housing Opportunities zoning project, zoning ordinance rewrite. So very excited, I don't know if you guys know, Rod was the planner for the town of Norwich. And then he became interim Town Manager for Norwich for a little while, and then he was named permanent Town Manager. And eventually, they parted ways, and so he's a planner professionally, and is now partnered up with Brandy in the consulting.
Do they have spare capacity to still do the master planning?
Master planning is certainly on their radar, we're executing contract there, as you know, we have money approved for that. I said, you know, we absolutely want to execute that contract. It's likely having to be pushed out a little bit, so we may be encumbering those funds. I think there's some work that we can get started on, as you guys know, there, the five chapters that we plan to do additional to the five that we've already done, have committees that we can start to work with. And it's very interesting, these housing grants that they've been involved with happening both in New Hampshire and Vermont, and they've got six or seven communities now that they are the contractor for. So I think that the reality is the master plan next phase is going to be probably pushed a little bit out, probably not something we're going to start right away on, starting right away on the on this.
We have to, right?
We have to, because that, there's a timeline, as you guys know, I think it's July of '24, we need to expend $62,000 from that grant, or we won't be able to get anymore, and so they're starting right in on the analysis phase. They're going to be asking, they'll be at our next meeting, our work session in August, August 9th, I believe it is, to ask you guys, who do you think sort of the informal stakeholders that they need to see are? I know that they're planning to talk to me, they're going to talk to Town Manager, they're going to talk to you guys. Any other stakeholders that we feel would be good for this sort of, it's sort of an informal review to sort of see, okay, what are, what are people thinking, what are we, what's lacking, you know? I really, I always emphasize that I got a lot of, I have a lot of stuff to shed from just where I sit, obviously being, that's what I live and breathe every day. And so I'm looking forward to that, that's, as you guys know, if you looked at that matrix from our grant application, months one and two of this process are really to sort of establish the baseline, where we're at, where we sort of think we need to go, and that's going to be that process, and they're going to dive right in on that. So it'll be nice to kick it off with that in August. I was at the strategic session there, I thought it was very productive. Interesting, you know, a couple of big developments coming to town possibly. As I've said to you guys, I think the big challenge on both of them is going to be Department of Transportation, State of New Hampshire, and access for these, they're, they're significant in size, as you guys know. And so the traffic volume, you know, when the State of New Hampshire looks at it, so 100 cars an hour, they start having real heart palpitations about that, and they have, it's being pushed up the channel to DOT New Hampshire at the state level for engineering and paralysis for both of them.
Wow.
Yeah, so they've both sort of requested driveway permits, which sort of starts the process. Unfortunately, it's, it's also a long process, they're certainly not in a big rush, the state sort of wants to take their time. Both firms are going to have to deliver engineering that will, you know, talk about traffic impacts and so forth, and so that's going to be the real challenge. We've got some really interesting things that we're looking at, and I can, you know, take you further down the level. We got a busy night tonight, so certainly reach out if you want to, want to chat, but.
Rob, those hearings, what, what would be the nature of those hearings?
The hearings?
You said we're going to see some applications at our, at our next meeting?
Okay, so let's see, I'm trying to remember, we have a subdivision, no, sorry, boundary line adjustment? So it's not, nothing to do with these two developments, these are just sort of minor.
That's what I meant, the two developments.
No hearings yet, no applications.
They're conceptuals.
So they're, they may be in for conceptuals again at some point, but nothing, nothing formally applied for or anything like that. They're really doing, they're in this sort of phase right now of what they call due diligence. So one of them has a purchase and sale on the land, they haven't actually bought it. And the purchase and sale has a clause that gives them the opportunity to try to see how far they can get down at approval, and obviously, as they've identified, they actually, they're confident in being able to work with you guys and, and us as the town. I think their big worry is the State of New Hampshire and the ability to be able to reasonably access pieces of land. You know, if the state is going to say, no, 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 you have to have churning lanes and break down lanes and all this stuff, it could completely put a wrench in gears, I mean.
Is the water supply issue come up?
As the what?
The water supply, you can't.
Not, not in these discussions, but certainly we've been talking to them.
Absolutely.
Public Works and Town Manager and, and, you know, I can update you that we've, we're drilling new wells to ask for beach. And so that's a cost happening here, so, yeah.
Water and sewer cannot be a part of the site plan review.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on top.
Yeah. We're on it, because water and sewer is at the behest of the Select Board.
Both developers have offered space on their land for a grid to be able to basically give us some spots for possible additional ones. That's it for me.
Okay, I'm going to skip the review and approval minutes, if you don't mind, so we can get to the public hearings.
Sure.
First public hearing. PS 230701, the trustees of Dartmouth College have applied for a minor site plan review to construct and operate a new replacement sailing facility at 142 Shake Boulevard, map 27 lot 13, the subject parcel is 2.72 acres, is located within the R1 zoning district. The property is owned by the trustees of the Dartmouth College of Hanover, New Hampshire. Bob, is the application complete? Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
It's another chair.
All kinds of chairs. We've got all kinds of chairs, chairs are not an issue tonight. The first thing is, because we only have six, instead of seven, you have the right to postpone, or if you want to, you still have to have four votes out of six. If there were seven, you'd have to have four votes out of seven, but you have that right because we don't have a full seven. So it's up to you whether or not you want to go forward.
Proceed or not?
Yes.
Yes, you do, then?
Yes, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Well, good evening, my name is Lindsay Walkinshaw, and I'm a project manager at Dartmouth College. Joining me this evening are Richard Whitmore from our Athletics Department, Chris Cook, McClay Architects, Nick Fiore from Engineering Ventures, Mike Farm from DEW Construction, and John Brady is also a representative from Dartmouth Athletics. Hoping to answer all of the questions anybody might have. So tonight, yes, we're seeking your approval of the proposed replacement of the existing boat house and boat storage facilities at 142 Shaker Boulevard. The property is the home base for Dartmouth's varsity women's sailing and coed open sailing teams. The teams practice on Lake Masoma on a daily basis during the seasons, and also host a few regattas. During the summer, the property supports Dartmouth's physical education sailing class, as well as Dartmouth Yacht Club. The yacht club offers membership opportunities to members of the community, where they can take part in youth and adult sailing classes, as well as additional offerings. This level of programming will continue with the new facilities. So the existing buildings were constructed starting in the 1950s, but can no longer support the current programming and community use in the way it deserves. The replacement of these buildings will allow Dartmouth to provide a racing and training location for sailing teams that one would expect for Division One teams vying for national championships. It will also provide a very welcoming location for community members to enjoy the lake through the yacht club. So once the project was identified internally, we engaged with McClay Architects for concept and full design. We've previously partnered with McClay Architects on the Musselaw Ravine Lodge project with great success. Throughout the design process, we've been meeting with Rob and Liam to review and ensure conformance with zoning and building codes. So next, Richard is going to speak a little bit to the athletics program.
Yeah, sure, so John Brady and I are here, my name is Richard Whitmore, I'm the Athletics Director at Dartmouth, and thank you for having us here tonight, and pleased to be here, and, and, you know, we're, we're, just, I guess in a bigger picture, you know, we have four of our teams that call Enfield Home, and we're very proud of that, we're very proud to have that partnership. Both our golf teams compete at, in practice at Montcom, and both our sailing teams, obviously, here at our sailing facility currently. We're very excited about this project, it will really do, do a great thing, great things for, so that we can still meet the mission of our programming. You know, we're trying to support multiple different programming initiatives out there, and this new facility will really help us meet those missions. We're excited about it, and our varsity program, in particular, you know, will allow us to really have the type of facility that our other varsity programs on campus are able to, to enjoy. It will allow us to be more, will allow us to be more efficient with our students' time. It is a good bit of travel for them to come back and forth. We'll have lock rooms that will allow them not to have to change in shifts. It will allow us to have pre-rig boats so that we can get in and out of the water as quickly as we can, and, and be able to really have a, a, a top tier facility that we can also compete against our other, I believe, colleagues with, in terms of our ability to have a facility that meets the needs of the program. And I think the other thing is that we, we, we run multiple programs out there, and we want to be able to support those programs as best we can as well, and I think this facility will really allow us to do that, so we're very excited, pleased to be here, and, and looking forward to this process. So thank you.
So I see up on the screen, we have the, the location of the sailing facility, and, you know, just to point out, like Dana White. Don't know what's there, so this is, this is what exists on the site right now. We have what we call the south shed, the north shed, and the current boat house. And what we're proposing to do is the south shed, the one that's closest to the dock, the dock that extends out here. Replace the boat house with a boat barn, and they, you heard Richard talk about efficiency. That will be where boats are rigged and can be pulled with, with their mast up, their sails on, splashed in the water. The students have more time on the water, as opposed to stepping the masts and rigging the boats. And then this north shed will be taken down, and that's where we're building the new boat house for the, the facility for the students. Mostly their varsity lodges and support uses. So that, that is what the site plan is about, and how we organize the buildings. The site is fairly steeply sloped, and so by locating, I keep wanting to call it the clubhouse. We're trying to use the terms boat house and boat barn. So excuse me if I slip up and say clubhouse, but you know what I mean when I say that? So the boat house, by being located here, will actually have the main floor be able to be accessed, or the upper floor accessed off of the upper parking lot, and the lower level off of the lower parking lot. We're, again, not changing the programming or size of the program, so not changing the parking other than to dress it up and clean it up. The, there will be from this upper parking lot, an accessible space and an accessible room into the buildings, and a loop up or lift down, and then accessible route to the boat house, where they can access the buildings. And, so I do not have a, a finished lighting plan for you. We've gotten the lighting fix sheets, and all fixtures will be downcast and shielded. It really isn't a nighttime use facility. And those, the lights are going to only be, will have a signal ballard at the edge of the parking lot here, where the walkway meets the parking. A couple of rail lights that can guide you into the building, and then some building mounted, no lighting for our parking lot, just the building mounted light, which again, downcast, shielded. And I think I'll pass it over to our civil engineer, and if you have any other questions?
Sure. Thanks, Chris. So I'll just, I'll just take you through a couple of highlights on the plan set itself, just so we're kind of all on the same page, but just to let you all know that this project was subject to NHD Shoreland permit, and that was approved on July 13th. So we have that in there, because of the sewer, the septic system work, we also need a septic approval from the DES, and that is still in the process of, of working on that.
New septic or admission, or?
So the, the boat house is going where the existing septic tank and lift station is. And so we're, those will be new, new lift station and new septic tank. And then the leach field itself, we're using the existing and expanding it a little bit, just to bring it up to current codes. It's, the existing system's about 20 years old.
When do you expect approval on that?
The next month. So, yeah. So just as a, I'm just going to point to my plans. On our C 1.1, you can see where we have labeled the boat shed and the boat barn. And you'll note that the existing boat barn actually is within the 50-foot setback of the, of Masoma Lake. We were very careful about when we laid the site out, and just in the next few pages, C 2.1, that the new facilities, new buildings are all outside of that, we pulled everything back. As I continue on C 2.1, you can see where we have, the upper parking lot is all shaded, just to really, you know, indicate that we're going to basically do top coating on that, it'll stay gravel, but it's just going to freshen that up a bit. The sidewalk that goes from the parking lot to the new buildings, boat barn, or boat house, I did, and boat barn. And really keeping the facility as compact as possible, and still meet the needs of the facility. We've got three rain gardens, three rain gardens that we're adding to the site. Those look like mostly roof runoff, and, and treat that roof runoff, and also detain it for a bit to slow down the release into the lake. And so the, the post-development runoff rains are just below the existing conditions as they are now. We do a full erosion control plan for during, during construction, to prevent any sediment from leaving the site and contaminating the lake as well. But those are the highlights. I don't want to, I don't want to drag on too long and not let you guys have questions, so.
You got anybody else?
That's it?
That's, that's it.
Any questions from the board?
Any trees are you moving?
Total trees, that's hard to say, just because of the ones behind the, so the existing, or the, behind the existing shed and boat barn.
Yeah.
So we're going into those a bit, but within the shoreline, the 50-foot area.
My real question.
Yeah, within the 50-foot area, there are a few that we're removing, most of them were actually identified by Dartmouth Arborist as being diseased. And so when it, when it comes down to it, the ones that aren't dead or diseased, I think it's only, it's only one or two that aren't dead or diseased that we're taking out.
They give you a bit more access to the water, direct access for the boats, is that the reason?
No, one of them is, so if you're looking at any of the plans, and you see right in front of the existing boat storage or the proposed boat house, where there's rock outcropping, is listed on the, right there, there's a really big pine tree that actually is, you know, potentially dangerous. So that one's coming out for a safety, but also it is nice, I'm not going to lie, that it affords better views from the building. And then that's really the main cause of that. I can say too, that we just received a courtesy copy of their foreland's permit, it's been issued by the state, I guess, so I've got a copy for the while, but and that's a good sign that they got their approval on it.
Yeah, Dan, I think we agreed at some point to follow the standard requirements, schedule, and our orders in terms of questioning.
Yeah.
Kind of keep us on track.
Yeah.
Want a copy of that? 5.1 and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to know if I'm reading this correctly, is the septic system under the parking lot?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Leach field or tank or boat?
The leach field is, the, the tanks are down at the, they'll be next to the, exit the new boat house. Yeah, they're currently behind the existing boat shed.
Yeah.
There's an upper parking lot, you said, in a lower parking lot?
Yes, so, so on the plans, you'll see the upper parking lot is shaded gray speckled, that's the upper one. The lower one is, is labeled C 8, but it's not really shaded. Post-construction, there'll probably be some dress up of that as well, just from vehicles, because vehicles mucking it up.
David? Hi, I have a few questions. Since we're on the C 2.1, I cannot find the C 13, and I'm wondering if perhaps it was mislabeled with C 14?
You are correct, sir.
Thank you. Next question, C 2, the concrete ramp appears to end before the entrance to the boat house building. Does that imply that there is no handicap access to the boat storage, the boat ramp, or the docks?
No, so the, the upper labeled, are you looking at?
Can you, did you put C 2 dot 1 on the screen, Rob, so we can all see it?
Sorry, yes, so, yes, C 2 goes from the parking lot, and then it goes into the upper level, the upper level of the boat house at the C 14. And then inside the building, there is a lift. And so then folks would, would exit onto C 7, the patio C 7. And then there'll be accessible connection to the boat barn itself.
I see. Okay. On the next sheet, what kind of vegetation is going to be planted in the rain gardens?
So that, but that'll essentially be a low maintenance, probably a wildlife seed mix, where it's a small flowery plants, seasonal, but it's, you know, like I said, low maintenance, vegetative grasses and small flowery plants.
Okay. How many boats are currently stored in the existing boat house?
Total would be, let's see, 30, it'd be 36 boats. Those are the, for use by the varsity team, the summer boats are stored outside, and there's 20 of those. But they're stored between moorings and outside of the buildings.
Okay, so the net increase or decrease in the number of boats is what?
There would be no increase or decrease.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, and I'd like to compliment you on a really great proposal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
What's the, the overall square footage increase or decrease from the old building to the new building?
Also, I would have to get back to, I don't know, between 21.
In, I read somewhere in the.
Zero points, yeah. Existing in the new.
Oh, I missed that.
Yep, sort of like.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
So the clubhouse, or boat house, or whatever you want to call it, is going from 1680 to 5398. The garage, which must now be boat storage, is going from.
The garage, which must now be boat storage, is going from twelve forty-eight to thirty-five sixty-four and the shed staying the same.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Thing.
Yeah.
I presume you're going to have like warm spaces?
Same, so the facility will be insulated, is that what you're?
Well, yeah.
Heated, insulated.
Ability being a little warmer.
Yes.
Yes.
Can see why you're doing.
You, uh, do you shut the, the facility down for the winter, the programs out of there?
We do, yeah, and we, we, um, what, what's, utilities that we have, we drain, turn off. Um, it'll be a little different with this facility because we'll have to check it more regularly, but, yeah.
We are considering it.
And, um, the numbers of people that would come and go here, doesn't appear that there's any significant change in that.
That's not our expectation, that we, that we increase traffic, just better handle the traffic that we can get.
Right. I think my questions are really meant to sort of highlight some areas that, uh, the public might be interested in knowing about, not that I'm questioning your judgment or anything or the decision. So I don't think this project has really got that much, uh, attention. By the time. In any event, it, it looks, uh, seems to be a significant improvement in what you have here.
It also has the look of a lot of your other, uh, has the same type of the look of your rowing facility on Atlantic River. It has somewhat the same as your rugby facility. All your new facilities seem to have the same nice rustic, uh, upper valley look. Uh, from what I can see, there's probably only two conditions that I've seen so far for approval. The final septic design approval and then the light plan. Um, if anybody else knows any other, but first I'd like to open it to the public. If the public has any comments or questions?
Are there a butter, excuse?
Yeah.
We attended the meeting last Wednesday with, it took a lot of my questions.
Okay. So there are no questions from the public?
The meeting last Wednesday?
Not with us, must have been with us.
Oh, well, that's good to know. Glad you did that, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I'll open it, final questions from the board.
Dan, I have a question.
Go for it.
Um, is there any plan to have social events at this location? Either during the normal operating hours or in the evenings?
Um, we would, we would certainly wanna support the current programming that we have now. I can't, I don't, we don't necessarily have any plans for any expansion, but that there might be and whatever we would do, we would certainly wanna do anything that would be within the regulations that the town would have to support.
You don't have a, you don't have an idea you're gonna have a conference center?
Yeah, that's not a, no.
Yeah, no, I attended a, uh, Enfield Village Coffee, right, uh, to meet John. It was a really nice, uh, opportunity to see their facility, so.
Yeah.
I would assume they might do something like that once, once the new facility is open.
Yeah, we'll be more attractive.
Looking for more donations. Just a couple. Okay.
And just, just curious, uh, construction schedule, you just rough that out over the year and then, uh, does that interrupt your program? Do you have alternate plans to say?
Yes, we, um, the Lake Center Yacht Club will be a temporary training facility for our team, so, um, while we improve their, their current home.
On the schedule?
So construction to start, um, mid-September and, uh, for the facility to be open next August, some point next August.
And so you'll miss the spring season of voting then?
Uh, right, we won't be, the facility won't be off.
You'll be at Lake Side of the, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What you're saying, we try, uh, certainly the varsity team or the, the, so, camp and the P E class, is that gonna carry on or is that gonna stop too? Joe, is that going to summer?
I think, so our current understanding with the programming is that if we have construction activities happening on site, um, the summer programming won't occur next, it's not being relocated for next summer. Um, obviously, depending on how construction schedule works, you know, that'd be something we could reevaluate in the springtime to see if we would support it.
So the, um, square footage of the buildings you're, you're building, I mean, they don't appear to me to be any more significant than some of the larger houses around the lake and, and so, and expectations of construction, traffic and things about the same as.
Yeah.
See for a large.
Right, I agree. If they're not expanding the program, the only way you could add, add more is to add more boats. And if you're not adding more boats, then, then I doubt the varsity team's gonna get any bigger than it is. It might with a better facility.
The facility might, but the boats are gonna stay.
Boats are gonna stay the same, yeah.
Yeah.
No increase to the dock size?
Right. Okay. Any other questions from, go ahead.
Question for the construction manager.
Yes.
Or just a heads up, road is posted in the spring.
Right.
Anything heavy won't be able to get in and out.
Thank you. Our, our project superintendent has been thinking about that. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on the board? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And you have no more questions, I might entertain a motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, then we approve the application as presented.
Can we, with the conditions? Do you want the two conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, with the condition of a final septic, approved septic plan by the state and a lighting plan, a final lighting plan?
Who approves that?
We just need to get the lighting plan. We don't need to approve it. The state approves the septic. They just need to give Rob, give Rob the septic, approved septic plan and a site plan for the, the lighting.
The lighting plan would have to, if it met our regulations, there'd be no further action.
Right, there's no, gonna be no further action from us.
That's it. Well, unless the lighting plan didn't need our regulations.
Right, but that's up to, that'll be up to Rob to say if this lighting plan, that's the only condition. It's, it's an approved lighting plan and an approved state septic plan.
And there are no other environmental permits or anything you need to get?
Right, they got the shoreline, they got the shoreline from D E S already.
Well,
Do you laugh at?
To amend the motion.
Okay. Wait here a second. You got the motion as it is, Whitney? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have an aye from David also. Any, uh, nays?
Were you a yes or no?
I am a yes.
He's a yes. Any nays?
David online, you're supposed to do a roll call.
I did.
Roll call.
Oh, David. I'm sorry. Whitney?
David?
David?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Dan is an aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Yay.
Yay. I have seven yays, so I can't have any nays. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You could all stay if you want, but, okay.
Yeah, I, because they're appreciated.
I'm used to be a same role.
Yeah.
If you're just, yeah.
Act on top.
Yeah.
Stuff.
It's true. Yeah, exactly. It's like, it's like the sailboat back. And yet they have to, they have to put their, and they have to put the sails on, and they drop it on, on the, but this way they're able to. Okay, they have, they're, they're. Poets.
They're expensive.
Yeah. So does the, you know, the boy, the varsity men, uh, sail there too?
Does the varsity men, they're with varsity?
Poets. It's actually a poet.
Yeah, male, female.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
And in the summer, they have a ground for local use.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a friend that's attending. Which is actually tired. Last week, I think.
One of my sons is going next week.
Oh, yeah, okay. She, she loves it, by the way.
One of my boys rode his bike over there every day.
It's,
I'd be interested to see, hopefully the septic is, you know, I can see to the point where, you know, it's really safe and they can handle the volume and all of that, but that's a state issue.
Yeah. They're, they're also, you know, upgrading it to standard, today's standard.
Oh, yeah.
Better than it was, for sure. You don't have to make, they just have to make it better.
I don't believe five, fifty-five gallon drum, right?
Or Volkswagen Beetle?
Or Volkswagen.
They exist.
I know.
Now, they exist.
Yes.
Yeah.
I talked to Dan Rankin and he said in their first house when they lived in, there was a fifty-five gallon drum that someone shot for the five acres.
Yeah.
There, there are, there are existing systems that are not doing well on Crystal River.
Yeah.
Before the flood.
Oh, yeah.
You go by with the kayaks.
I mean, our house was a dry well. It lasted forty years.
Let me know.
Feel smell. I'll show you. With cocktails.
I never even send that.
He's any other. Liam.
Are we ready to move on? Get everybody back. And we now have a full board, so I don't have to say the same thing to you that I said to Dartmouth College. You actually have to, do you think, tonight? Second public hearing, P twenty-three oh seven oh two, R V M Real Estate Holding LLC via Town of Enfield is seeking minor subdivision approval to create two lots on seventeen Granite Place, map fifteen lot eighteen-one. The subject parcel is currently six point four one acres, is located within the R four zoning district. This proposal will create one lot of three point four acres where Granite Hill, Granite is located and a new lot of three acres. The land in question is owned by R V M Real Estate Holding LLC. Can I take it they've approved you to speak on their behalf, Ms. Gaboris?
They haven't, we haven't let her in.
Okay, that's all, that's all I need to know. Because they're the ones that are doing the subdivision of the town.
You're gonna do this, not me, so.
Okay. Go right ahead.
That was part of the deal. As you guys, as you guys well know, we're looking at purchasing the front half of the Shaker Hill Granite site here for the public safety building. We've been doing a lot of work. Our engineers have, have worked and we worked with Rob to, to adjust that, pretty much that northern boundary that cups the subdivision to make sure that we have enough room to put our building in there with the setbacks and to do it. So we're coming, coming to you to for guidance, look at the subdivision before we move forward, just to make sure that everything seems to fit.
Moving back again, just a point I kept in not too long, maybe even a month or so, for site plan.
I'll send you that's. So this is, this is basically just the subject.
Just the subject. And as you guys probably are well aware, we, being that we're the town, sort of exempt from having to follow the rules, but we always try to follow our own.
Well, no, in this case, you're not.
Oh, yeah, subdivision.
For a subdivision, you're not site planned, you are.
Site plan, I'm talking about.
Right. Yeah.
But we absolutely feel
Right.
the necessity that's good.
Yeah.
Follow your own rules.
And, because I asked the question this afternoon, Granite Place is a town approved up to Town Specs Road. So it doesn't run into the, you've got more driveways and it's a public, it's private.
Yeah, Granite.
Drive.
Granite is actually built to the
Right, it is.
Back of the highway or more, so.
So we will have no issues with, uh, access from the state D O T?
No, we've already been talking to them. They're not worried about access and we're actually gonna have a ramp that goes on to four. They're okay with that. The one thing that they're concerned with that our engineer's working on is making sure we catch as much stormwater runoff as possible because it's a, and it'll slope down to there.
So if, uh, if the town wasn't even involved with this and R, R V M wanted to subdivide this into two lots, is there any reason why we wouldn't, uh, approve the, no, there's no, he, uh, well, they fits the zoning in that district and so forth.
Is the town going to be using Granite Place as the entrance and exit?
Well, we will be using Granite Place. I'll have an agreement with.
Will that be the only, uh, people?
Well, there'll be an exit out of the fire base on Route Four, but other than that, it'll be, if for normal traffic, it'll be in and out of Granite Place.
But I'm in, in an emergency, I think you'd need a second way to
Yep.
get it clean.
Well, the fire trucks and ambulance will go right on the Route Four, off the front.
So it's gonna be a traffic light there so that they can shut down the traffic and get out, you know?
I should be holding this for the site plan.
Site plan.
So, I mean, we will be talking about that, but yeah.
Sorry.
That's like, strictly a subdivision.
We are looking to.
Yeah. Any questions on?
How big does the town purchase lot as an abandoned name?
Three point zero three. And, uh, you guys may or may, may not be aware, we, we, uh, we extended, uh, water and sewer a number of years ago, all the way down there, so we'll be able to, we'll be on town water, so we don't need to worry about the septic approval, but we've got our own system connected.
Let me, the town has to pay?
Yes.
I guess.
We get bills every month for all of our, as well as better on water and, as well as paying better than.
Fill the church.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? No. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion. No, he's just typing. To get.
Oh, I was probably just, I hear, I'll do that. I'd make a motion if we, uh, accept the, um,
Approve.
Approve.
Minor subdivision.
Minor subdivision of three acres.
Second.
From Robert Waltz of B's.
All in favor? I have to do a roll call. David Frack?
Aye.
Whitney?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Uh, Dan Kylie votes aye. Brad?
Aye.
Tim?
Yay.
Yay. There being seven, I can't see where there'd be any nays. You get your subdivision, but Rob actually gets his subdivision.
Full in time.
You can inform him.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ed. You can stay too, if you want.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dinner.
Next up, conceptual, Pellerin Bingo, four fifty-three U S Route Four.
Here we go.
There you go.
You were comfortable.
Yes.
Enjoying the A C O, right?
Yes.
You want me to?
No, this, this, this is, got a second one there.
Yeah. She's got that, we can stand up and do a little bit, she'll be right there, so. I'll start by introducing yourself.
Hello, I'm Vicki Pellerin.
I'm Roy Hallen.
John Pellerin. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
So when we own the complex,
Yeah.
so we wanna do a bingo hall.
Which complex? We don't have any.
The Shaker Valley, Robert La Croix Shaker Valley.
The used car dealership.
The used car. Used car dealership, I bought that a month ago.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yes, yeah. So I've been doing bingo for many, many years. Um, right now I do Lassollet Tuesday night, which you know, they're all closed, they're gonna be closing. So I have the, um, museum is gonna take that slot at my bingo hall on Tuesday night. I do bingo down at Fun Spot in Laconia for the New Hampshire Veterans Association Sunday afternoon. Um, I've done bingo over here at the, uh, community building for four years for the fire department. Maybe, what was it, uh, twenty sixteen, somewhere around there, so.
So is this facility your operation, is it a nonprofit?
Yes, right now I have the American Legion of Lebanon.
Yeah.
The Shaker Museum.
Yeah.
The, um, Legion Auxiliary.
Yeah.
And the fourth one is.
I always forget this.
Police.
The police, it's the town of Enfield, why should I forget that one? That is gonna be the fire, the ambulance and police, police.
So when you do a bingo night or whatever, it, it, you specialize in one of those, uh, charities that the, the.
Yes.
The property go to.
That's, right?
It's a state, right, that you have to have, X number of charities, an X percent has to go.
Yeah.
That's the only way you can have.
Yeah.
Bingo in New Hampshire.
Oh, yes.
Has to go, there has to be a percentage that goes to nonprofits.
Yeah.
So Chelsea will know what your plans are here, you got the building?
Well, we got the building. Um, we have, if you wanna come look, this is what it looks like without.
Bring up the, uh, tax map so you guys can see.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, I'm familiar with, if you're familiar with the Shaker Valley complex, there's sort of two sides, you pull up in. On the left side is the auto parts store that Johnny runs and then there's the auto body in the back of that same complex. And the servant, there's a gun truck in the middle and there's also auto repair.
This is what.
And then they have now acquired the right game, it's got an auto showroom.
Okay, this.
Dealership, Bob La Croix is running many, many. I'll pull up the map.
Okay.
And there's a fifty foot right of way that goes through the middle, out to the back.
I think this area, but not behind.
Yeah, this is the showroom. This is their offices, this was a workroom and bathrooms.
Good, we'll start one conversation, yeah, please, we won't miss anything.
Okay.
So, on, on this one here, we made, we've taken out a couple walls to make this space one big space. We've added two handicap bathrooms and this is the parking for the handicap. There's doors, as you can see, um, the doors out in this room. So then, this would be the setup for the bingo hall. We've drawn in the tables with the chairs, this is the handicap parking. And we've got, of course, the two handicap regulated for handicap accessible.
Does either you have a kitchen, do you sell food or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will have a kitchen, there will be no grease, no fryer later, it's gonna be all air fried. So I don't wanna deal with any of that.
So what, what's the bingo hall, but how many nights a week and?
Four nights.
Four nights a week.
Monday through Thursday, we're leaving open Friday, Saturday and Sunday, cause I've had people approach for cornhole tournaments, cribbage. So, you know.
Kind of open for?
Events, anybody that wants to.
About hours, I guess.
Okay, for bingo, we will open the doors at three o'clock. And it should be nine, nine thirty at the latest, it depends on, you know, the group of people, how quick we get out of the session. Roy Holland is my bingo caller, he's done it for many years for me. Um, and we do it over the Lassollet, it's usually about nine fifteen, we're out of there.
Any idea how many parking spaces you're going to need?
Well, I counted the other day, I think when there was bingo, I went out and I believe there was forty, no, what did I tell you?
There were, there were sixty-six views that we had, uh, seventy-five people.
Okay.
Seventy-five people, but they use sixty-six spaces?
Yeah, because some are together.
Right, yeah.
Mother and daughter and whoever.
Yeah.
I can show you.
And he can show you what there is in the park.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of.
Well, yeah. So there's, uh, as the front of the building shows, at least the, right now, there's no, there's no lines on it at all, so it's like out of a free throw, but we're gonna put lines right down the front, obviously, to get what you see here.
It's here.
Yeah. That landing on, going right down through till about here with the same lines, cause, uh, we'll have cars, yeah, used cars still in the center of this, so we're basically gonna go right around here. This is gravel right now, so we can't strike it per se, but we will have also another, probably two rows on the side of this building, so for, for parking for.
It goes way up.
Of course, yeah, and of course, we have all of this and.
Car wash.
Yep, your car wash right here.
The detail, yep, that's.
Detail right here.
Yeah.
And then, so basically all this is showing the, the asphalt, except it does come out in this, it's pretty much all asphalt. Except for this. And we are still, we are still, so, so Robert was running his car sales, we're not gonna be running it to that extent, but, uh, so we're gonna move the car sales into the smaller office on the left-hand side of this plan.
As you can see.
And then just having bingo hall, basically the showroom, as some of you guys, basically taking the show. Instead of parking the cars inside, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So the wheelchair can get down through here.
Probably two to three employees for the car sales. Uh, right presently, it'll be about one.
Okay.
Bob's still gonna do that or?
No, we'll do that, um, and I'm sure Bob's gonna do it on, they've been right down there. So, no, you might still see him again, but, um, could be across the road, I don't, I'm not sure, but we'll, his original starting office, well, I guess it wouldn't be the original, but it would be in the nineties or late eighties, he was operating out of that little office.
Yes, great, great.
So we're basically going back to where he started.
Yeah.
And then the showroom will take up the bingo, um, for four nights. Um, bigger, let's see, uh, you'll see on the front of the plan, we had, he had obviously two big, uh, glass doors. Put the whole car right inside, so they're still there, they're gonna be, uh, still there, um, lighting. I think it's, I, I feel that the lighting there is pretty good where it's not, it's still, it's shining down, it's, uh, they did shut the, there was a huge light across the road that was kind of lighting up the whole place, that's been turned off. Um, my mother's bought a couple of new lights, uh, that work really good and they're all, I don't, shining down, not like pollution.
David has a question.
Yeah, so how many, uh, bingo patrons will you be seating at the tables maximum?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Yes.
And plus staff for that?
Uh, staff will be eight or. Cause each, each organization has to give me two people to work that night, because in order for them to get any of the money.
Right.
They have to be present, so they all know that, they have to sign up, they have to come, so.
They could sell cards, they can.
They can do anything that I have them, as long as they have the badge on and they've been approved.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any alcohol?
No, no alcohol. I do have enough to have seven nights, cause there's that much interest, nonprofit, they're looking for money, so.
Now, is this gonna need a site plan?
I think so.
Yeah.
Changing, so.
It's a change in use, um, the other thing is, I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, cause I talked to Jim, is there's going to be a condition. And the condition is you have to hook up to the sewer. Because the way the regulation is, when Bob sold it, his ability to not be on the sewer anymore, it was, it went away with Bob, that was the way the select board set it up was when the property is sold, it means you have to connect to, anybody who's, the sewer goes by, has to connect to the sewer.
Well, I already talked to my lawyer before I bought this.
Yeah.
And because the letter does not say Bob La Croix, it says the owner of the property shall have till twenty twenty.
Well, it said the, the, it said, to me, instead of putting it as Bob La Croix has this much time, it said four fifty-three West Route four. Uh, I think there was another year last.
Well, Dan, that's the, that's strictly a water and sewer commissioner issue.
That's a, that's a select board issue, but if it's, if the select board is going to be the one, I mean, on the side of this, I don't know if it's a condition, I know that zoning has put this as a condition on other things that they've done. Is that on the, uh, property that was, uh, Stax Lawrence, they made it a condition of approval that they had to connect to the sewer because the way the select board wrote it, it's gonna be the select board that's gonna have to.
Well, okay, I, I, I think, I think because the increased, uh.
Capacity.
Capacity, you know, the system, so forth, you gotta show that your existing system is gonna be able to accommodate that, or the select board will have to exercise their authority and.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we already checked that, you know, with, uh, when we bought it from Robert and I had the letter, I took it to my lawyer and so we know down the road, we're gonna have to, okay?
Do you think the, the existing septic system would handle eighty-eight or ninety-five, whatever, seven days a week?
Well, the original, and I say the original, uh, was built for the car wash. So it was built for, for a free bag car wash, um, I'm sure some of you have already had Bob in here for numerous times, uh, you know, he, he, when we were buying the property, we looked at the letter and we, we have a copy of it, but we were, you know, like, all right, cause it is obviously hooking up, hooking up, there's gonna be some money and, and it's gonna be, uh, but I feel that, you know, hopefully this doesn't, I don't want it to, uh, you know, by bringing the, the whole lawyer thing up, whatever, cloud the, you know, the proposal.
No, I don't have a problem with the proposal.
Yeah. I just don't want that.
And it's conceptual anyways.
Conceptual anyways, at this point.
Yeah, so, um, so they would need, they would need an evaluation of that septic system, I think, right, for up there. Well, I mean, they're a professional engineer to evaluate the septic system to agree that it can support the intended use. I'd need that at the minimum and then whatever happens with the town and the sewer and something like that.
To the select board.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we, we wanna be, we wanna be good neighbors and, uh, you know, we're probably not going anywhere for a little while and.
You're to be.
Oh, yeah.
Cause you're already on town water, is that right?
Yeah, they're already on water.
We have a portion, let's see, the, the, the.
Your park store.
Uh, the park store is on town water. And the service is on town water, the body shop is on the well, the, the, uh, car wash is on the well.
Yeah.
And, and the sale, and this is on the well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got the park store and the service are on town.
On water.
Yeah. And I'm not sure why, I'm, I'm guessing because the body shop was originally there, you know, in the eighties.
Right.
So that was probably the original.
Yeah, there was a moratorium on connections about that, so I think it's probably was.
That's probably with the time, so.
Do with that, but, uh, is the car one actually used?
We use it, we use, uh, we have one employee that does, uh, the detail, the, the, the used cars and he's doing people off the street.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't use, there's no, uh, all the machines have been taken out, uh, you know, all the automatic car wash and all that stuff, that's all gone, so he's got a pressure washer and a garden hose, um, and it's still, you know, that's.
That would be, did a great job on the friends of Mass over there.
Yeah, so he's, he's been there for twenty-three years.
Yeah.
Uh.
Long time.
Yeah, and I knew the whole, the whole sewer thing is, is a big.
It's a big.
Debacle that Robert was involved in and.
Yeah.
And a lot of people and, uh.
You?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, when the that, that area is not heavily populated by adjacent residences. Just trying to think what would, what other things should they prepare for?
Yeah, I can point out some things on here.
And Bob La Croix still owns.
Yeah.
Four of the properties that.
Right.
Could join rentals.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and you'll notice, yeah, so Bob owns here.
Right.
And then you'll notice, you'll notice there's, uh, very tall.
Right.
Trees right here, so you can't even see, those go right into here, so you can't, you can't see on, on the.
Right.
East side, um, and then, uh, let's see, she got this, and this bank actually goes right up steep right here to, um.
Bob's, other.
The Bob's other place.
Yeah, which is the rental, is all rental now, that goes up, so I don't think, I don't think standing up there, you can see.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've got that here and of course the development, you know, going out, uh, you know, if it all goes through, it'll be, and I believe, uh, they have the access
Through Lovejoy.
Right here, they have the right of way through here.
Yeah.
Um, which I don't, and I don't seem really using the right of way, um, with.
And if that goes through, they'll also, they'll also be able to go out through Baltics, with Frost from Baltics.
Yeah.
As a part of that property.
You focus on what?
So originally bought this, the old park store, the service and the body shop.
Yeah.
And then, and then now, uh, basically the right key inside, so we split it, when we did the, the deal a couple of years ago, we had the, we did the right of way on.
How far back is your land go?
Um, let's say.
And the lights.
So, so they, this is off a little bit this map, but this, the asphalt goes kind of right to here, almost to the, right to the line.
Yeah.
And then this basically should come down, you know, separate from keeping, so it should be basically right here.
So those, uh, property lines aren't accurate right there.
No, I'd say it's.
Yeah, there's, she's, she lags a little bit with getting those updated.
I'd say probably right.
Yeah.
Pretty cool, that's pretty cool, and you, and you'll, if you go, you go through there, you'll see the pavement is kind of hinged, you know, just before that.
Yeah, Rob, do you think the U T will have a one-way in on that? Seven nights a week, eighty-eight cars coming on, I don't know, that's even a lot, I have no idea.
Uh, that's a good question, I.
I did reach out to, we talked way back.
Yeah.
Um, I did reach, reach out to Chris Turgeon.
From D O T.
And he, he hasn't got back to me yet, but he said his, you know, I guess don't, but he said his first thing was, uh, that he felt that it wasn't peak hours, I'm guessing because people are gonna kind of peter in, but when everybody leaves, they're probably gonna leave all.
When it's gonna be nine thirty.
When it's gonna be nine thirty.
When bingo goes, they're, when bingo, when the last bingo calls, they're headed out.
They head out.
So, so the good part, I feel is that it's gonna be in the, in, in the dark.
Right.
And it's meant to be at nine o'clock at night, so, the traffic is, I mean, traffic at nine o'clock at night on Route Four is, is pretty. Slender and stuff.
Yeah.
So I, I think, to me, I think it'll be, it'll be, you know, we'll have a good.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I'm just trying to think of things that, that, uh, Butters and others may want to know.
Across the street is Robert's, too.
Right, and the way that, that bank is set up, the, the issue would be, them seeing it would be the noise, and I think the noise is gonna be muffled.
Yeah.
By the way that land sits.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably the worst. This guy is probably the worst, for any, you know, as you're coming out, as you're coming out.
He will see the light.
But the good part is, the, the good thing is, is his house is sitting.
Right.
Up, up the hill a little bit, so, so when you're sitting there, your lights are not.
Right.
And then her house is, again, that's a little bit, not by design, I'm sure, but her house is a little bit lower.
Other side.
And it's not anywhere near the, the lights, um, yeah, this one, you can't see up here.
Yeah.
Big trees here.
Trees there.
Um.
Nothing, yeah, and a fence, I think they put a fence up, too.
Yeah.
The only thing I will say, from experience in being on a planning board myself in a playing field, is ask, obviously, what you want. And don't undersell what you wanna do, because we saw in Playfield with a project, and Kevin Newt Academy put in lights for their field. And said, we're only gonna use it twice a week. Yeah, crazy, you spend millions of dollars on these lights, and you're sort of hamstringing yourself, where you, you say you're gonna use it four nights a week, but.
He told me that's all I could do, because I'm getting.
It's four nights of bingo, you know, the three nights could be something else.
And I would say that, you know, if the cribbage organization of America comes forward, and they say, we want Friday night. Uh, but hopefully, we, you know, hopefully Friday night, we can do some of the R C cars. But the, but you got the cribbage, you've got, uh.
Cornhole, cornhole tournaments.
And you guys actually wanted a night, too.
Uh.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's, yeah, I would say, for us.
Right to Vasco.
But I would say, yeah, I would, I guess I would say to put it down is, you know, the seven, the seven nights a week.
Yeah.
Uh, we still, we're still dealing with Liam on how many people safely can we have? You know, that's why we kind of put the table, and he's gonna figure, okay, is the exits, are we gonna be able to get out, you know, is everybody gonna be able to get out?
Right, that's the assembly.
Yeah, so we still have to go, we still have to do that, um.
The bathrooms.
You know, the bathroom, do you gotta make sure that the seven, seven feet? You know, it's.
Hardware on the doors.
Seven six.
Always open the double doors.
Yes.
And it burns, it's kind of.
Yeah, so I, I, so, yeah, we still gotta get through, through Liam, and see what's safe, and make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, being over to, um, Lassala, it's really hard. We have stairs to go up, so I'm limited, limited to the people going up the stairs. I have more people that sit downstairs because of our age, you know, so, this, they can't wait, it's all on one floor. I won't have to be running up and down the stairs, so, so it'll be very nice.
Yeah, where you park, where you park, I mean, there's like, very little elevation right to the door, so you're really, you're not even stepping. You know, we don't even have to have really any, the, the ramps that are at the door.
Probably, yeah.
They're so small that.
Yeah, so you won't be traveling to Lutonia anymore.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you still are, he said you could all use it four days.
Well, only here, I make way, I make way too much money down there.
I know.
In two years, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we've made for the New Hampshire veterans.
Okay.
So I cannot give that one up.
That's good.
They love you.
They do, they get, bought me my bingo van.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So. Yeah.
You got any questions, David? No.
I'm good, thank you, I think it's, uh, a good proposal, and I can't wait to see the formal, uh, site plan.
Thank you.
Well, one thing, we, we will be looking at is the white, um, signage, but.
Yeah.
With the lighting.
Yeah. Rob, Robert's taking his pink sign, which is fine with me.
Yeah.
So, and I, so I don't know, we'll have to get with Liam, I, I don't know what the measurements, any of them, are you, okay?
Yeah, he's probably gonna maintain that, yeah.
Grandfather gives the sign.
Probably wanna remove the sign before you have an outside of.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I'm, to me, I'm hoping that he, because it's still kind of up in the air, if he'll leave the sign. He could take it and just rip the thing down, and, but, uh, so, well, that was, too, what I wanted to ask you. So is there stuff, what else should we get ready for, so then when we come back, you guys are, you know, we've.
I'll work with you guys, but, you know, you, you heard, just, just heard Dartmouth, I don't know if you guys were paying any attention to it every time. But, you know, it's, it's things like traffic flow, and, and parking, you got, you got that pretty well on the run, uh, lighting. They, they want everything down facing, what's called full cut, so it's not.
Yeah, so we, and we have, so, so on that lighting thing, so is that where we can?
Notate on the plan?
So we just put like the little.
Yeah.
Light.
Little symbol.
Square box.
And, any landscaping that you're gonna improve or change?
Um, well.
And then you. Operation, and.
I mean, if, if he takes that sign down, how quickly do they need to put up a sign?
I'm not worried about the sign, because they can have a sign, that's perfectly legal to have a sign.
Okay.
Uh. But the existing sign may be non-conforming, so you wanna maintain it.
I would say it's non, it's.
It is.
It's.
Right. It's more than four by eight.
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than the, the sixteen square feet.
Right.
Um.
The non-conforming use is a twelve month from the time that it's either made.
That was my question.
Or removed, or burned, or whatever.
But I.
Twelve month fall, to replace it, it's the same size.
Because I, I do, I think we do have to research it a little bit to see, because there's so many businesses in there, how do we get?
Yeah.
The whole thing, that, to look halfway decent, you know, I mean, to look.
Yeah.
Uh.
But it's go right down the hill, I mean, uh, uh, Ziggy's, you know, that plaza that Jody Roberts bought, right? They, they tore the old sign down and put a new sign up, and it's got, you know, it's, you can have your main sign, it's whatever they call it there, I don't remember what the name of it is. But then it's got the sort of.
The other.
Sweet.
Single, single ones.
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly.
And that's what, that's what we want.
Yeah.
Okay, we just want everybody to know who's in there, doesn't have to be, you know, huge.
And as you know, you can even have a lit sign now.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
City town has one, yes, that's changing our rule, it just can't be flashing.
Right.
Animated scrolling, all that kind of stuff.
Unfortunately, it's thirty miles an hour through there, so you don't have to plan for that, and, and trying to see a fifty-five mile an hour. Right.
It's gotta be big. My complaint with ours is that they, every time I drive by, for some reason, all I see is time and date. And I'm like, I know what time it is, and I know what date it is, so why are we showing that?
I, I like yours, because I can actually see under the sign, to see who's coming from Canaan.
What I'm saying, too.
Yes, because I could not before, and I said, I like this, because now I can see what's coming.
You've got it, yeah.
Dumpster. With screening, it's, it'll presumably just have more ways, then we would need a dumpster.
Dumpster is like, be enclosed.
Yeah.
Uh, treat.
Um, I recommend they be.
Well, we, well, so right now, Robert has his own.
Yep.
And then we have our own.
Yep.
So all we were gonna do was use.
Same spot.
Our, our own, not Robert's, because we already have.
Okay.
We have ours set behind the bu, behind the body shop.
Right, yes, does it have a, uh?
It does not.
So, he's got to make that a condition.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna need to have a screener, a screening around it.
Good.
Uh, I recommended the, uh, more than just screening, too, because, uh, the one at Ziggy's. Has been a huge bear.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Throwing air fry food in there.
Yeah.
It's probably fine with auto parts.
Yeah.
Try this, but.
But she still gets in there.
Absolutely. And, and she was taking stuff from the dumpster, basically, getting, hitting the buffet, taking it out into the woods.
Directed.
There.
If you just go to Ziggy's, you'll just see climbing out sometimes.
Oh, no kidding, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she loves it.
And, and a few years ago, she had three, three babies.
Right, yes.
She owned three before.
Wow.
Yeah, um, so I got the lighting, the sign plan, the dumpster.
Yeah.
I'm seeing you too, I mean, we've got, I'm gonna show you the list.
Okay, yeah, I'll get, I'll get with you, is there anything else you guys wanna see?
We can't do much anyways, until Robert, we have a, a lease for three months with him. So it's not up until the middle of September, and.
But it's coming.
I know, but has he moved anything? No, I'm going over tomorrow to take stuff off his walls for him, that's how bad it's got.
Yeah, septic's got it. Be real, we'll give you the list.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll do that, so, yeah, I mean, if it, if it was sized enough to be able to handle car wash, if we can get us kind of a letter from a designer that says. It'll handle eighty-eight people, four nights a week, or whatever you guys are gonna open.
Yeah.
Or eighty-eight people.
The car wash is just gray water, and we're talking human waste.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
So that's just some due diligence, you guys will have to do.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much, nice job.
Good, thanks, guys.
So we'll be back, is that the thing?
Yes, absolutely, I'm ready to take an application for this, uh, uh, August, what's the, what's the meeting date? August still available, I think it's, uh, Au- August, hold on. At three, twenty-third is our next available hearing, and the deadline is August second, if you want to get the application.
Okay.
All right, we'll get it in.
We'll get it in.
Yeah, and you got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Ninety percent of it done right there.
Yes.
That's a real nice design, you showed us a parking, and if you add the lighting and landscape that you wanna put up, and.
Yeah.
You're well on the run, and we'll, we'll work with you with anything else.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Let's go back to review and approve meeting minutes.
I had no issues.
Anybody have any issues? Aye.
What?
David's back.
Minutes are good.
Okay.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of July twelfth, this written.
All in favor, say aye, David. All right, Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I say aye. Aye, aye, him, you, okay, yay.
That'd be exciting to be honest.
I know, so do I, I'm gonna go in the other direction next time. That's right.
No, no, next time you should start with us all saying yay. See, if it just feels like being contrary.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Can I ask a quick question back to the conceptual that we just said? So, can we force people to connect to the, the sewer system?
We can. Legally, we could have done it when it first went through, but the select board made the decision that, um, people who had it. And as I remember, it was when you sold the property, changed hands, you were supposed to connect down.
So, we're not sure what.
We're not sure, and that was, that's what we've done to everybody else.
Because I, I understand their point of view, but it seems a shame to have a system that's not getting connected.
The problem was, Bob had six properties.
Well, we, we're speculating a lot here, I.
Yeah, right.
I think we just asked.
It's gotta go to the select board.
And I'm gonna ask Rob to look into it, because I do think there's some properties that have changed hands in the interim, so that. There is precedent to what has been done.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, but I'm pretty sure.
I think he's one of them.
Yeah. When the pharmacy sold that building, they had to hook up.
Well, how are you gonna break that? You can't break that precedent.
We'll see what.
And Z B A just did it.
And Z B A did it, with.
They throw.
They made the condition.
Made a condition of the.
That little, uh, ranch house that was, uh, uh, Stag's.
Phil Lawrence.
Real estate office, and Lawrence, right on the corner of McConnell and the Ford.
Right.
That is now gonna become a duplex residential, so they had to come in for a special exception.
Right.
Because it was, uh, the established use there was as a, as a commercial, uh, office space.
And it was a house.
It was a house way back when, exactly, so, we made them do a special exception for the residential use within six hundred feet of Route Four.
Right.
And the Z B A felt very strongly that that system was likely fit, failed anyways for a single family home, and it's.
David, we're muting you until you're ready to talk, because there's a lot of background noise, uh, from road, road noise.
Yeah, um, as I remember, the, what's now the six oh three garage, they do auto repair and truck repair. It took them a couple of years before they connected, did that, did that not happen? Dan, do you remember?
Six oh three did connect.
Eventually, they did, but I don't think it was immediate.
It wasn't immediate, but they, they said they were gonna connect, and they ended up connecting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So these guys are trying to avoid it because it's a substantial monthly cost.
Yeah.
Right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And, 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 the shame is that Lebanon has now instituted a, a development charge, which is substantial.
What does that, what does that mean?
Private policy.
Or church, there's a charge to connect, when you, for the initial connection, there's a charge.
They just, they increased that.
No, they, they added a new one, we have, Ed Field has one to connect in Lebanon, because we're going into their sewer, said, yeah, we're gonna have one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how expensive is that?
I, I know that, uh, Jake's Car Wash, thirty thousand.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
It, it's not just fees to connection.
That's connection, and they don't do anything.
That's ridiculous.
And it's also based on use.
The volume.
Of course, the car wash is using a lot of water.
True, but it's not Stewart.
A lot of sewer.
It's gray water.
It's gray.
Gray water.
It's taking the, taking the place of.
No wonder people don't wanna connect this system. Yeah, so. Well, broken.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's, we, previous town manager.
Right.
Wanted to fight Lebanon hard on it.
Right.
But when it came down to, uh, the interim town manager was a lawyer, he looked at it and said, you know what? They've got it, they've got, they can definitely make us do this, and I think that the compromise there was, you either. They can either say, okay, you own thirty percent of our treatment capacity, so when we gotta add for PFAS.
Right.
Need to upgrade the plant by twenty million, Enfield, you're gonna pay thirty percent of that, or what they're doing is charging our, our.
Because it's gonna get to the point where. It is, so I mean, it's. It's gonna get to the point where it might be cheaper to consider your, well, we can't now, because we've got two major projects in town, but consider your own treatment plan. I mean, that's just.
No, this.
Oh, really?
Every day.
Get there, crazy.
In fact, it's part of the, they did a, I forget what they called it, they did a study, it was probably five years ago.
Right.
And so we've got the results of that from five years.
That was the study. It was a repeat of a study that I did thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Right, and it's just nuts.
And I will say, I mean, you know, for the, for the car wash, Brad, thirty thousand, sounds like a lot of money. You're not building a septic system for that. No way, you know, it's, it's, it's cheap money compared to building it yourself. Obviously, you've gotta pay the monthly fee, uh, you know, for service.
Which, which is very high as well.
It's very high, absolutely.
And fairly high.
And consider this, the comments have been made that the, we should go, it's, this, the city has complained that neighboring towns aren't doing enough to, build more housing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, we, we've got the state of New Hampshire talking out of two sides of their mouth. One, they want more housing, and then they're being as difficult as they possibly can be with entrance onto Route Four and other roads, so.
Well, I, I, I don't, problem I have with that is not that they're being difficult, it's just they're taking months and months and months. And if you could just get them to, review that in, say, a ninety day period, and render a decision, no matter what ideas.
People could move on.
Just, yeah, they need to be able to move on.
That's it. It's uncertainty. They could draw it out for years. Really, years? Uncertainty.
Jake's, Jake's had a complete plan for the entrance and exit that was approved by District Two. And Conker changed it. And they changed it after it had been approved. That's why you can't go into Jake's and come out of Jake's. That's why the do not center, enter sign is there that doesn't work. But the, but the state made them do it that way.
Violent that all the time.
Yeah, exactly. And you violate it going out.
And the cops can't enforce it if you do violate it too. There's, you know, it's just advisory anyway, so.
Yeah, 'cause it's not private property, but, you know, it's like, you know, it's like Route Four's been on the ten year plan for twenty years.
Well, I, I, I really think the ci- the, the town of Edville, I'll just tell the city of Lebanon, no. And let them take us to court. I, it, it needs to be fought tooth and nail. And I, 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 I think you're right, there was a point when.
Oh, yeah, right.
Might have happened.
Right.
But, uh, the select members at the time just backed off. Unfortunately, the original inter-ministerial agreement, which I worked with when I worked here for ten years, was, was pretty good.
Yes.
It protected the town's interest, it protected the city's interest. When that expired after twenty years, somehow town screwed themselves.
Right.
They really, really messed up when they agreed to that, that new agreement.
Yeah.
That's been a problem since.
Yeah.
That's why our sewer bills are so high.
That's right.
That's interesting. I, Brandy and Herb, or Rod, they work a lot in Vermont. And it's really interesting because, a lot of the Vermont stuff, especially in relation to Lake Champlain, uh, they call it the point source, the, the, you know, the stuff going into Lake Champlain. There may be capacity on some of those systems up in like Burlington or Essex and stuff, in terms of volume, but they are that close on nitrogen and magnesium and all those other things that they're putting out. And so they're having to look at increased treatment, which is, which is unbelievably expensive. I mean, when we started having to treat for PFAS.
What is PFAS?
That's a forever camp chemical. It's, it was used as like non-stick and fire retardant and.
Oh.
And it's the stuff that is. Yeah, there's no way to get it out of the system anywhere.
Linda, you, you're crawling, but we all are, yeah.
And, and supposedly it can cause cancer.
Right.
And they can detect it down to points per, per trillion or something.
And I think the biggest mistake the town made, is operating this sewer system with our own people. That should have been an extension of the city.
Yeah.
There should be a city of land, a sewer truck, or I can do every now and then maintaining the, the facilities.
Because all things considered, we have one connection.
Yeah, we are one customer to that.
We are one customer and we have to do our own billing. And we have to do our own maintenance.
Well, I think at the time, the select just couldn't bring themselves, to allow the city to own a utility within our town. And it was stupid. I think it was decided and should never have.
Right.
Well, we like to sell, like, pick up our garbage. It's not much different.
No, we're, that is a lot different, because we're engaging a, a private contractor who serves town.
Right.
Which does not involve infrastructure. It doesn't involve infrastructure.
That's.
And we don't maintain anything. Okay, there seems to be no new business. The old business, I guess we've talked about the zoning rewrite and, rules of procedure, Ed left.
Yeah, when were you gonna get?
So, does he have a work session coming up the next day, in two weeks?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say we can certainly tackle that. Probably, we, we talked about Brady and place sense will be here for that meeting.
Right.
The thing that's on my list, uh, that I sent you guys, the Housing Academy. I think Brad, you said you had some interest. I've signed up. You've already signed up?
No, but I, I am considering it.
Depending on the beverages in the vehicle on the way to the.
Okay, where is the inverse of it? I didn't show where it was.
So, uh, what about the, um, uh, the legal issue?
I think he's volunteering.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the legal issue of the two procedural questions.
The two zoning interpretation questions. Where is that?
I wish I had it stayed.
Yep. I, I, I talked to him about it. I guess, I would love to have that.
We need to have that discussion. Thought they wanted to invite him to the meeting, the next meeting, so he'll come for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And he could do that remotely.
Right, absolutely. Yeah.
Um, also, he objected to something that we wanted, that we suggested in our rules of procedure, right, Ed?
Yeah.
Well, this is, can't do this. I wanna, I wanna bring this up again, because.
Well, that's why I'd like to add for that meeting.
Yeah, what I suggest, what I suggest is that, the secretary, the chairman and Rob sit down with, uh, Ed. Find out what wording is, he's, he's having a, he's uncomfortable with. We'll simply change that.
Right.
And then when we come back in, uh, August.
Have to do that.
Yeah.
We'll have a document. Otherwise, we're gonna have, Ed's gonna have to come in August and then have to close it down.
And then we're not gonna get it approved till September at the early.
That's right.
Yeah.
I do have an inquiry about, um, uh, Chair, the Heritage Commission would like to know when the master planning will get around to discussing heritage.
That's not one of the next five, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is. It, it is, Parker, the next five, and I think we'll learn that when Brandy and Rob, come and discuss the two contracts on our first August meeting. Is that correct, Rob? We'll cover that.
Yep, that'll be, that'll be an excellent time to nail them down on schedule for master plan. We know they're already started on, the HOP grant stuff, zoning rewrite. The master plan is obviously because of, we have flexibility with master plan that we don't have with the HOP.
Right, right.
So, that'll be a good one. We can hold their feet to the fire on that. Uh, and I, by the way, I'm calling it reservation. Heritage can obviously be a part of that. But preservation of the heritage, you know, basically.
Yeah.
That's a better word, 'cause you really can't plan for your heritage.
Right, can't plan for the preservation of your heritage.
Correct.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, um, I did have something just popping in my head, uh, just, Housing, Housing Academy. Uh, yeah, someone we were just talking about. If you can come back.
Well, I'll accept motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
David? Tim? Brad?
Yay.
Dan, yay. Eric?
Aye.
Okay, we're outta here.
I'm in.
I'm at eight ten.
August ninth.
Dan, thank you very much for cheering.